Okay, it's 7 o'clock, so I'll call this workshop to order. And I'm gonna kick it off by turning it over to Christine. You're gonna tell us why we're here.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioners, and I appreciate everyone taking the time to come in on Monday evening so we can have a little bit more detailed discussion regarding changes in our solid waste collection program. Joining us this evening is Mr. Vance Moore with Garrett &amp; Moore. He's spoken with you a couple of times previously, so he'll come in and give an update as well. So I want to start off tonight with the purpose of the meeting. First thing we'd like to do is to provide a refresher on the three phases of project development, and this is specifically three phases of the project that we've contracted with Garrett &amp; Moore. They initially did an analysis of our existing solid waste collection and disposal system, and then gave us some suggestions in how we're moving forward with that. The next thing we will do is review the conceptual design process findings. Again, as Garrett &amp; Moore reviewed our tonnage data and different bits of information that we gave them, they came to some different conclusions. We presented those to you in the normal Board of Commissioners meetings, and then we decided on the path forward. We will also, this evening also, this allows the Commissioners to make final comments on the design before Garrett &amp; Moore prepares the final construction drawings and specifications. So again, we've been talking about this for quite a while, and now we're ready to move forward. There's been some, there's a new face on the board, so we want to make sure that everyone understands how we've gotten to this point and what the path forward is. And then also, we're gonna provide an anticipated schedule. So again, going back to talk about our existing collection site program, again, up on the screen you'll see a map of Beaufort County with pink circles. Each of those circles are designating the service area of our existing collection sites. The county currently operates 10 collection sites. Different wastes are collected at the sites. All 10 of the sites currently collect MSW or regular household waste, or garbage, as people, some people call it. Also bulky waste, which would be furniture, mattresses, items of that nature, as well as cardboard, yard debris, and then used motor oil. And then certain sites collect white goods, appliances, refrigerators, soaps, that type of thing, electronic waste, televisions, computers, monitors, and then also scrap metal. So some of the challenges, and why we've initially started down this path, is that the annual cost to operate our solid waste collection and disposal systems continues to increase. For those of you that have been on the board, you will remember the solid waste program previously was supplemented by the General Fund, and then a few years ago, we pulled that out, and it's totally supported through enterprise funds, and it's funded through our solid waste collection fee. And again, you're familiar with that because each year in the annual budget, that fee is specifically called out for each parcel. Also, currently, only five of the 10 collection sites are currently county-owned, so again, we are paying a lease, a certain amount of funds each year to lease or to rent those sites, so again, that's an added cost. And with the majority of the tonnage is collected at only three sites. So again, out of those 10 sites, the majority of our waste is picked up at the River Road Site, the Cherry Run Site, and the Gray Road Site in Chalkwood. One of the other challenges is referring back to the map that we saw previously, there's a significant overlap in the service areas on the north side of the Panico River. So again, you'll see where we're speaking with that on the north side, you can see that. And then also, the Ransomville and the Landfill Gate Sites are currently owned grade sites, so again, those are the flat sites. And as each of you had probably received telephone calls from people regarding those sites where they do not like using those sites as well as they like using the mounted sites. So then we, as we've gone through this process, our current, our planned solution is to construct two mega-sites, that's the term we've been using, to consolidate the collection sites. The mega-sites will be manned sites, and they will be designed to receive all of the materials that are currently accepted. So again, that's the premise that Garrett &amp; Moore has been working on. Also, at those sites, what had been determined is that the yard waste will be processed at each of the mega-sites. That way, it would eliminate additional hauling costs for us to pay. Again, if you remember, all of our collection sites now do currently accept yard waste, so the yard waste just goes into a 40-yard container, and then Republic Services goes and picks up those containers and transports them to our landfill on the north side of the river, so that the current yard waste is collected and it's not compacted when it's brought over to our landfill to be processed.
Is compaction the only process, or is it ground up?
Once it reaches the landfill, it's ground, but it's not compacted when the hauling. So when they are hauling the containers to the landfill, there, there's a lot of voids in that, so it could be done more efficiently. But then you get into the issues with the weight of the containers, which Commissioner Booth could speak to, we'll get onto that conversation. And so that's kind of where we are. So now Wes is going to continue the presentation and take you through the specifics of how we've gone through the process.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Commissioners. So as you can see, we've, and this directly correlates with the work that Garrett &amp; Moore has done for the county. The three phases of our project development. Phase one, dealing with conceptual design and parcel identification, which we have completed that process. Phase two, property acquisition, which we are currently in our due diligence period, and closing is pending. And phase three, which is final design, construction documents, bidding, and construction, which are our next steps. I'll go into a little bit of detail about some of those, and then we'll move into some of the design elements. So as part of phase one, Garrett &amp; Moore evaluated our solid waste system. They looked at our historical data, and they looked at the number of containers that would be needed at these new sites, and evaluated the cost and benefit of compacting certain items. Based on that data, they have suggested seven 40-yard containers should be provided at each site. Each site would have four compactors. Two of those would be for MSW, which also, in this instance, includes bulky waste. Recyclables would have a compactor, and cardboard would have a compactor. Open-top containers would accept, we'd have one for MSW or bulky waste, for anything that could not go into the compactor, or in this case, in these cases, pre-crushers is the term we'll be using, one for scrap metal, and one for tires. So this would change up our tire collection process as well. White goods, electronics, and motor oil would be collected on grade at our, we're trying a multi-material building. This would be a covered section of the site. We'll go into a little bit more detail showing that later. In addition to that, they evaluated the cost and benefit, pros and cons, of installing scales at the new sites, and it was determined not to be an effective means of dealing with our waste unless we chose to go with a pay-as-you-throw system, which at the time was not something that was seen as viable. After that, they took the comments and everything from us, developed a conceptual design based on our needs and wants, and after refining that through meetings with Garrett &amp; Moore, we presented that to the board, and you all gave us go-ahead to proceed with phase two property acquisition. So phase two, we researched many multiples of sites. Two parcels were chosen that met all of our search criteria, that best fit what we were trying to do. Along this process, like I mentioned earlier, we are currently in the due diligence period for both parcels, and just an update on where we stand on that, the wetlands delineations have been completed. We're just waiting on U.S. Army Corps of Engineers verification of those extensive wetlands. The property survey is in final review stages, and just a little bit of field work remaining on that, if everything's good with the maps that they've drawn up. And we have a closing date scheduled. Not quite there yet, but we're getting close. So what we want to do next is take a look at the, before we get to phase three, which is the next steps, we want to take a look at where we are right now. We want to look at the different design elements that were incorporated in the conceptual design that we've come up with so far. And as a part of that, we want to take a look at, as Google Street View, of a site in Wake County that has really helped to inspire our design to some extent. So I'm gonna exit out of this right quick and pull that Street View up, and let y'all kind of see what we're looking at before we really dive into it. So this site is between Zebulon and Wendell. It's one of the newer Wake County sites. And Christina and I have visited the site. We've got a good look at it, talked to the site attendants. It seems to work really well for what they have going on. So I'm gonna move through this. I'll, if y'all want to see something, we can, you can ask, we'll come back to it as well if we need to, but I just want to kind of do a little bit of a drive-through view of what we're thinking along here. So they've got their, back to, sorry about that. They've got their signage of the different materials they accept, they do, accept construction waste at the site, which we do not do that at our sites. But they've got, it's one-way traffic through here. Drive-in, this is their multi-material covered area. It's only open a portion of their operating hours, but that's where they collect electronics. They also do HHW at this facility certain times, but that facility offers a lot of different options for us if we incorporate one of those in our design. Site attendant hut on this, in this instance, is just a pre-manufactured facility, but you can see that each waste type has their own bay. They've got colors assigned for each different type of waste. They've got numbers, makes it very user-friendly for the people that are coming in on where they need to go. They've got parking spaces where the people come in, and they back up to this so they can pull their waste off of the truck or trunk of the car, and then deposit it into the different locations. These right here, they're pre-crushers, so you can see that they are screened off because there's equipment down there that, you dump your waste into the hopper, it pushes it up against a solid metal door, I'll call it, really compacts it down tight, and once that's done, that door raises back up, and the compactor pushes it back into the container. So it's compacting it before it ever gets in the container, and then, once the container's full, it'll continue pushing more waste in there to really compact it down tight, and get as much in there as they can before transport. This site has got more standard compactors for cardboard and recycling, more like what we're used to on our current sites. And again, they have open tops for scrap metal, and then down here, they, like I said, they have CND on the site. One thing we want to point out is the covers helps in the, in the event of rain, helps keep the site attendants, you know, dry throughout the day. They're not walking around wet all day long. It gets them out, and actually helping people instead of their out in pouring down rain. Another thing it allows is for better site lighting during the darker times of the year. So you can see they've got lights up here underneath their shelters, so come middle of the winter, when it gets dark at 4:30, there aren't people out there fumbling around in the dark trying to dispose of their waste. So that's just a general overview of that site, that again, I said, has really helped kind of inspire what we have going on here. Any questions on that right now, or otherwise, like I said, we can come back to it a little bit later.
So they've got somebody that's out controlling access, kind of directing traffic?
No, it's all, like I said, it's a one-way loop. You come in on one end of the site, you drive through, and then you exit the other end of the site. They had, I believe, three site attendants the day we were there. All of them were out working, helping customers. But that, that's more of dealing with the actual waste disposal than the traffic control. Traffic control's pretty self-explanatory.
How much vehicles do they handle on average days?
I do not have that. Vance, do you have any idea?
I don't have it off the top of my head. It's going to be probably higher than you're going to see here on a typical day. About that, and have the tonnage data, which correlates generally to how many customers you have, and as I recall, I mean, I'm pulling from three months ago when we compared them, the tonnage anticipate here is a little higher than you anticipate on either side, in north or south side of the public area.
And Wes and I were there, and I remember what I tell you, was that it was the middle of the week, the middle of the day, and there were three site attendants that were, that were there working, and they were working. They were going up to people, assisting them with their, whatever they needed to take out, if they needed, you know, two people to carry something, they did that. There was one pushing a broom, there was another one that pushed and didn't. So again, they were out, very, very available, and very active, and taking care of things. And those were the people that were working during the middle part of the weekday.
And there was steady traffic while we were on the site as well?
Yeah. And it is amazing the traffic. Once people get accustomed to it, because there's another site, but the north problem that is extremely busy, there's a bunch of larger sites, and people know to pull up, back straight up, drive straight out. And it really, I was amazed at how well that process worked at that busy site, that it was just continual, you waited for the next person, they got out of the business, and then they left.
I was there, I was there this, on Saturday, and it was pretty, it's a nice facility, but the only problem that I had with it is, that was a typical day, I guess, a Saturday, you had a traffic problem.
You said this particular site?
Yes, and if you talk about the one from Wendell, that little slide on country road.
Right.
Yeah. That's the only problem that I had, but it was, and it was, and, but that was when people, it was a sad one, when people scattered, and you had to wait in a line to spin around, because I think it's four or five bays that you're backing into.
They have two, two spots per bay, and then what they're, and you'll see it on our conceptual design later, there, you're not backing directly up to the container, there's a gap for walking, so even if you have to park, you know, two bays down, there's an area for you to walk without being in the traffic.
That's the only thing I saw with it, and that wasn't the problem, was that not going to be that many people that wanted to drive anyway, that was just a typical Saturday.
If you have a trailer, how hard would that be to back that in?
People who drive.
Well, I mean, okay, given that. I mean, do you have room to pull up and back up? Is that gonna stop the whole process, block everybody off trying to get that trailer back there?
I think you'll see in our design, and I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Moore up, so we're getting ready to move into that section as well, but I think you'll see in that, our design, that there's ample space for people that need some extra maneuvering room, and also a couple of different lane options for moving around the site. So I'll exit out of this. Again, like I said, we can come back to it if we need to, but I'll go ahead and let Mr. Moore move into discussing the actual conceptual design that they have come up with.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir.
So I think on your screen, you should be seeing the conceptual design that we employed for the phase one of this. So what's different about this than the one you saw at Wake County? Wake County had more of a enter one location, exit in another location. This one, you're seeing more of enter, go to a cul-de-sac, and come back out to the same location. Now, one of the things that this accomplishes is the staging area you have within your site to go all the way between the road and the cul-de-sac, and part of the way back, all the cars that can stack up in there without being in the road, the distance that you have, to get them off the road and have them stop vehicles out in the road. Number two, you see a access lane, now I don't know if it's labeled so you can read it, but access is where you would go when you're going to pull up to back into the stall. That's what we're calling the access lane. There's another lane that's on the other side of that, that if somebody's backing up, and you're going to, let's say you're not going to the first container, you're going more towards the end, you can go by them while they're doing that. So one vehicle's not going to back up the traffic here. And you see, you see parking stalls sort of denoted on there, but the length of those lines are typical parking stall that you've seen in any parking lot around here. But the lines don't extend, but there's quite a bit of room for a car and a trailer. So if you look at a car being 20-foot deep, a car with a trailer being, call it 40 feet deep, there's room for them to be there and still get by. I think that was a question that you were pertaining to. It is designed that you do back up to it, you do not pull up alongside of the whole container, you back up, and so your vehicle, the width of your vehicle is each customer's access to unloading. So another thing that I thought that was important, something that's incorporated in these sites, these split-level sites, is that you'll see that there's a separate entrance for what would be the hauler's vehicles. So it's incredibly important, in my mind, that you separate users from the service vehicles. One of the hardest problems that we have is interaction between those two. And if you have a vehicle trying to back up, or customers that are unfamiliar with, you know, being around equipment, it's dangerous. And in this situation, customers will be on one side of the wall, the people who service the containers on the other side of the wall, they, they're not intermingling, especially when they're backing up to hook up to a container. I think that's a huge consideration. So what do I hit the, hit the next one?
With, seeing the diagram like that.
That's fine.
Where would the storm debris be put?
All right, see the bottoms, see the bottom?
Yeah.
Circle?
Oval.
Yes.
That's the normal yard debris.
That is yard debris that you will have every day. I think we have a, later here, we're going to show you that.
Yeah, because I think the uniqueness about our two super sites, mega-sites if you will, is the ability to handle large volumes of storm debris.
So what we've got, correct me if I'm wrong, what we, what the plan was, that the north side will continue to use the site out near White House. The south side would handle storm debris on the site, and we're going to show you that. So this is a, just more or less a blow-up to give you some of the traffic patterns that would happen. And I was kind of trying to show you at scale how far you have between your access and your through lanes. You see cars coming in, you see cars going back out. On the bottom, towards the bottom of the page, what you'll see is what's labeled the mixed material collection, and that's the, that's the covered area, and we're going to talk about that in a little while, but it has a loading dock, where you see, it looks like a transfer trailer backing up to that. That way, you can go straight off the pad, straight into the back of the truck for those materials. The other materials that are either open-top containers or part of your compactors will be pulled by the vehicle, and they're, they will be on, and you'll see some pictures in a minute, we'll have concrete pads with steel embedded, made to handle the container rubbing, won't wear it out. That's something that a lot of these don't have, you end up with a, with warm sites that pond water, cold water, is, all of that is something that you don't want. But before I move on, are there any other questions about the concept that we have here? I'm going to have some more pictures that will get into it.
So the actual areas where people backing into, is that going to be cement or asphalt or gravel or what?
Any of the above. I think that what I have been directed in past meetings is that concrete is a long-term wear surface. We'd like to do it if we can. Obviously, we can do anything that you want. It's only a matter of cost. Concrete will cost more than asphalt, and asphalt will cost more than gravel. Now, now whether or not, even if you do it with concrete, would the entire road in and the entire road out be concrete? Perhaps. I think that we've got to have some flexibility, that it can be either or depending on alternative cost that contractors propose. I think there are areas that we will say absolutely will be concrete, no choice. There'll be areas that will be a hardened surface, either concrete or asphalt, and that there's going to be areas that we believe are absolutely going to be some kind of a stone, not going to be a hardened surface. But there will be, in particular, what I consider to be the drive lanes in and out, will probably have some alternatives between a concrete and an asphalt. Does that make sense?
I have a question.
All the areas where they're backing up, where the vehicles are backing up to get to the boxes, in the Wake County showed water field barricade.
Yes.
Are you playing that, you're playing concrete bollards, metal bollards, just so that when the person backs up and hits the gas instead of the brake, we'll end up hitting somebody between a vehicle and a wall?
Well, we had shown it being a poured-in-place concrete Jersey barrier type. There are some, there are some reasons you would consider doing the water field. It is, they're pretty substantial, and you fill them with water, they, they use these in a lot of situations. It could be, it could be bollards, when I say bollards, metal, metal pipes with these in between it. I think those are some of the things we can continue to talk about what your preferences are. You know, one of the advantages of the removable ones is the ability to maintain the site down the road. You know, 20 years down the road, if you want to resurface or whatever, it, it makes it a little bit easier to get in there between the Jersey barrier and where your customers drop off, if you ever have to go in there and do any resurfacing. I could see where that would be an advantage. Obviously, the Jersey barrier important place, it'll be a pretty substantial barrier, if you put that there. Yes, sir?
Some of the open space in between where you're gonna have the yard waste or storm waste stored.
Is that a better figure?
Yeah, over to the left and over to the right. Is that space for growth?
No, sir, as far as expansion of the site.
Yeah.
I think you'll see that on some later slides.
We've got some stormwater features that we have to put in there. We have to have stormwater ponds and conveyances and things like that.
How big a stormwater pond are you gonna have to have?
You've got to control the first half-inch runoff from the disturbed area. I've got some that I'll show you some concepts, but they're probably bigger than you would anticipate.
I understand, it's not a good soil out there. I have one more question. I mean, I would like CSB able to expand to recycling at whatever time this county decides to do more recycling. Are we gonna have that kind of space? decides to do more recycling, are we going to have that kind of space?
Well, so here's the way this thing is, is designed. Obviously, we have, if, if I could hold this question just a minute, I will answer your question about, let me see if this comes up pretty quick. All right, this is just a more or less a picture of the, where you put your containers. The way these are designed, it doesn't mean if you don't have a compactor there today, you could not put a compactor in the future. Let me make sure that we're clear about that. I think one of the lessons learned from doing these in the past is that we want to be able to, down the road, add a compactor should we choose. What a compactor does is allow you to handle more material with less space, that's the way. So that's one way to look at, you know, expansion if you will.
And this will be co-mingled?
Co-mingled recyclables.
Okay.
So right now, we have a space for compactors for co-mingled recyclables.
Are we going to be able to market that?
Are you saying because you compact it, you make it less marketable?
Yeah.
No, sir, I don't believe that has any impact on the marketability of co-mingled recyclables.
Sounds good.
So, but what I'm, what I'm showing you is just a little bit of the concept that I will get a little more into it in just a second. So this is the left side here, you can kind of see what a customer will see as far as a wall in front of them, it has to be 42 inches high. There's different ways of doing that. I like this method where the wall itself sticks up above the grade that the customer stands on. I have had customers that have made the wall stop at the ground level, and they built some kind of metal guard rail above, you know, for this, it's not a good, it's not a good solution, you have small children, you have animals, they have a way of finding a way where they don't need to go. So I, I like this concept, this is the plan, is to have this. On the right-hand side, you'll see the, what the, the container side looks like. So what we're trying to do on the design is make it so that the customer has to take the material and, and by all definitions, has to go above that 42 inches. All right? What we're trying to do is make it so that that container can accept that material at that 42 inch level above their, their grade. So what you're seeing is, here's a cross section, it kind of just shows a general idea of what we're trying to do. So if I start on the left-hand side, that is the container side, you'll see a typical 40-yard container, there's another example, we saw that debris cage that was sticking up above it. All of that will work here, both of them will work in this situation with these grades that I'm showing. But it's, it's trying to depict that is a person carrying a bag, has to go over that wall, there's no way around that. You see the, behind the truck, they have it labeled as a pipe bollard, that would be like a, you know, a round, it's any kind of a barrier. What we're trying to do is keep the vehicle from going up against that wall and pinning somebody. You see the cover, that's not shown at every site, I think it's a good feature, and there's many reasons you, you want it. You can see one in real life there, that's sort of what it would look like, you saw some in the street view, I think they, they look good. One thing I would not recommend, you can see what they use as their barrier in this example, those flimsy bollards, and they're not very useful for stopping the vehicle. Would not recommend that. I think that's why you saw the water field ones there, because this was not a good experiment.
Thanks.
Yes.
Point out the, the person working there, the site attendant, and the wall height, so they can kind of see that 42 inches that every person.
I think the green shirt, the lime green shirt, yeah, right there is your attendant walking beside the wall. So that wall's three and a half feet high, 42 inches. But that just shows you what the customer's going to be unloading over top of.
That's not unreasonable.
It's a requirement, I mean, regardless, there's no way to be handicapped, I mean, I'm sorry, ocean, I'm sorry, to meet ocean requirements, that's, it's a requirement to have that.
It's just better than the rails we got in our bins like Schlemm, in my opinion.
I'm a fan of them, if we can do it this way, I, this is the way I would prefer to do it.
It's not that much higher than what it is for somebody to put it in the back of a pickup truck, or to put it in the trunk of a car, or to put it in an SUV, so they have to get it to the site.
You're just not going to be able to back the truck all the way up to the wall and break it off.
Right, and that's the yard debris. Again, this is not for yard debris. Yard debris will be at the location, further, at a different location on the site, and that will be where they'll just be able to sweep it out of the back of the truck. So again, this is for the other types of waste, not yard debris, not grass clippings, not limbs.
There'll be a lane for refrigerators, and they flip over the wall?
So the refrigerators, let's talk about that. This is, this is an example of the, what we're calling the multi-material building, handles many types of materials, that's what we're saying, but white goods would be one of them used all. So basically, that is a covered concrete pad with a truck loading dock on one side of it, so that the materials collected there can be rolled straight off the floor that the customer unloads on, straight into the back of the truck. So that's where those would be handled. And here's a kind of a picture, there's TVs and such underneath the building, that's an example, just to give you an idea of what you can anticipate. Please take note, as you see, you see a concrete pad being net by asphalt there, I mean, that's some of the stuff that we're going to have to go through, the details, where's the concrete go, and where's it stopped, and where's asphalt picked up, for what reason?
And one of the reasons for that multipurpose facility is to plan, to plan for the unknown, to plan for the future, because as we know, more and more regulations are coming out with how to dispose of items. So it's a, it's a, it's basically just a large shelter that gives us flexibility in how we handle and process the material based on the market, or based on the current regulations. What we have with our recycling that we spoke about oftentimes in the meetings, there are other ways that we can dispose of the electronics recycling, but in order to do that, you have to package the electronics, and basically, other people take them, they put it on pallets, stack it up, and then they shrink wrap it, move it off to the side, and then once there is a tractor-trailer load, then you call, they come to pick it up and take it all away at once. So it's more labor intensive, but you're able to possibly pay for it, or you pay a less cost to, to dispose of it, because the people that are getting the electronics are able to do more things with it, because it's not just dumped over and broken to pieces, and the glass is everywhere, and they can't really get to it. So that, that's just electronics. Lithium batteries, we currently do not set lithium batteries, there's all sorts of deals in Raleigh right now discussing that and determining what are we going to be required to do in the future. We do not know, but this would give us the space to collect those and to try to determine what is it that we need to do. If there's other services that we can provide in the future for minimal cost, then this will give us a place to do it. So again, it's just that open area, you have to determine, but that, again, that's why we, it's, the site attendants will be manning this, people just can't dump it and leave, there will be a site attendant there to assist them and to make sure that it's put in the right place.
The way these TVs are shown right here, will they be taken away each night?
No.
So it builds up to a certain height, I guess?
And then they'd be packaged, and then once there was a palletized, they're put in boxes, and once there was an acceptable amount to bring in a trailer to haul that away, then it would be loaded up and hauled away.
Seems like at Falmouthers, that each night that it, it has to be pushed away, or put in a certain wear pile?
If there are requirements that, that they have to like.
Yeah, that's got to be clear, not, they have to clear that.
That's right.
But that's got to do with the type of waste.
Since y'all are into this, and I may have got lost in the conversation here, but it seems like there's opportunity to provide bins for the people who want to separate their trash, to maybe put paper in a bin, maybe put glass bottles in a bin, plastic bottles in a bin, aluminum cans in a bin, and whatever else you can think of, those wouldn't be very large volume things, but would there be, would that be offered to the public?
Well, the specific items that you mentioned, currently, the best process to do that is, as we have it, which is co-mingled, because you're able to take such a larger volume and you reduce your hauling cost so much.
Yeah.
While it's nice to have things divided up, and actually, a couple of years ago, I agreed with you, I thought that was the right way to go based on the market, to separate things, that way you were only accepting things that you were able to make money from.
Yeah.
But now the market has flipped back, where if you recycle, if you co-mingle things and you're able to compact it, and you have a 40-yard container that is full of compacted co-mingled recycling, it's more efficient and more cost savings to transport it that way than it is to transport a small amount of paper and a small amount of glass and a small amount of wood.
Well, I understand, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but, but we're not talking engineering and common sense right now, we're talking politics. And that is, there are a lot of people in the public who are going to want to divide that stuff, and it seems to me like it wouldn't be a very big volume if those bins were offered. They still may be co-mingled when we dispose of it, but it would offer something to the public that would make a lot of the people feel better about.
I think it would depend on the market, you have to look at it each time, but I, I would not be in favor of people believing that they were taking the time and energy and effort to divide their recycling, that we were just throwing it in the wind.
Well, that, that may be true, but some of those, some of those purists are going to want to do that, regardless, even though they know it may not go somewhere, depending on the value of it. But I'm talking about the purists that I hear from who, you know, they're going to, they're going to clean up the world and all this sort of stuff. And offering that, again, we're not talking about a big volume, we're just talking about offering, if you want to drive over here to the side, out of the way of everybody, and get rid of your Coke bottles, or your glass bottles, or your paper, or whatever, it might be something worth thinking about at this point in the game.
Yes, sir, I would agree with a lot of that, especially the things about off to the side, we're trying to build the flexibility, so that in the future, like I mentioned, lithium batteries, perhaps we could take those, or even textiles, because there's a lot of legislation now coming down where you're not, where they're talking about not allowing textiles disposed of in landfills, there are all these things that are coming, so I think if we're able to offer those purists, as you called them.
Yes.
If we can provide them with additional services, I think that would make them extremely happy and.
So, I, I'm going back to try to talk about this just a little bit. The multi-material building, that we're showing, square building, kind of on the four o'clock of the circle, as you're looking at it. The way I would see that, that, the activity that you're talking about is probably what I consider to be an at-grade, not over the wall, activity. So you would need more roof capacity to do that at grade, and it would be handled in the same manner where the material would be taken probably into the back of the truck via a loading dock. And the expansion would probably be by expanding this covered area towards the circle. You know, as a way to get more area to basically accommodate store to, until it's such time to haul it. Now, what I will tell you is, even if you separate it, it's going to the same place. You could take brand-new clean paper, and they're going to dump it right beside the pizza boxes that were collected in Greenville or Kinston or wherever else, and you're going to process it through the same line.
That's right.
That is the, that is just the technology today, there is no, this is the clean paper, and this is the co-mingled.
When did that happen?
It's been a trend for the last 20 years, but.
But what we heard was, you know, if you had a dirty pizza box, it wasn't going to go.
So what they're trying to say is, pizza box is not something they want to recycle, is what they're really saying.
Is that what they're really saying?
Yeah, and cheesy pizza box is something that's not a good thing to recycle. I mean, I hate to say it, but that's.
But they lied to us.
Who did?
Well, whomever.
No, they weren't lying, that's still the same, I mean, it's considered contaminated.
Yeah.
Contam, yeah, contaminated, same thing with plastic and glass?
Yes, sir.
Even if you're co-mingled, you need to pull glass out, because we heard one time, glass contaminates the main load, it's up there, it's not, is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
That is probably the hardest question to answer today, is, is it is, it's, that is, you get into glass, glass is just about as hard, to be as recyclable as glass is, it's the most recyclable material on earth almost, and it's one of the hardest materials to handle, because if you put one green glass into the clear glass, it doesn't take much to mess it up.
Right, and I guess what we feared was the handling, and I did read, they were rejecting the load, we couldn't get glass in for safety reasons.
Yeah.
That's because we were selling it, that, that was pricing, and it contaminated the load, and they couldn't sell that load because it was contaminated. I think it was pricing when we were actually selling stuff.
What, what would be the benefit to crushing glass? I mean, then, then it's, it can be handled a lot easier.
Yeah, well, we're for a number of facilities that have done a lot of, all of this. The, the, the crushing, grinding, whatever you want to call it, however method you handle it. If you grind it, and you have different types of glass, colors of glass, it's not usable.
You can use it as a material for a lot of things.
Well, that, I've, I've got.
Looks good, right?
Create a aggregate, if you will.
Yeah.
Putting it in flower beds, they grind it in such a way you can pick it up with your hands and it's not sharp, things like that. You just don't see a whole lot of market for it.
But our problem on all of this stuff, if you've got enough of anything that's valuable, we don't have enough of anything to be valuable, we've got enough to be a nuisance.
That is very true. So I will make a point, and I'm not sure this is, I'm going to get a lot of brownie points by doing this, but it's a death that you asked earlier, you know, expansion. So here's that conceptual put on the site, what you should get out of this is scale. How does this thing going to fit onto this piece of property? You know, what's the, I'm not saying this is exactly what it's going to be, it can move, it can move around, but that is the same size circle, same number of bins, same number of zigzag, same cover building, as we showed you on the concept. You'll see a long rectangle, yellow at the top of the, what you'd see as a convenience sign, that's what I'm calling, oh yeah, I guess I can't point to it.
Yeah, it would help if you had a mouse or something, a laser would be great. I, I still can't figure out how to get in there.
It's not showing up. How you get in where?
But I don't.
Yeah, the mouse is typically.
I can go to disappoint?
That might be a help.
Does that help if I go to one of these, have one of the points?
Yeah, just tell me where a typical car will go in, and where, how does it get over there to the loading?
The red dot was shown on the screen, right?
I don't see that at all. Anybody got yards?
You see that right there?
Yeah, that's.
That's the road.
The bank road.
That's the main road. I think that we may have, but that's a typical road, that would be the entrance coming in here. All cars, all collection vehicles would come into that entrance.
Is that the top yellow line or the bottom yellow line?
Yeah, that is, where you see the curves, that would be a typical driveway. Yeah, that is, where you see the curves, that would be a typical driveway.
Oh, that whole thing?
Yes, I got it.
There you go.
It's a little lagged, but it works.
All right, let me see if I can learn how to drive this thing. All right, right here would be an entrance. All vehicles would come and turn in here, from both directions. Collection vehicles would come and take a left immediately here, and they would all, their activities would be down in here. Customers would come, continue straight, go around, come back, back into, empty, pull out, here, now there would obviously be a stop sign for the collection vehicles here, and then this way they would go out, left turn, right turn, and out. I was trying to point out this area here, we just drew a square, that'd be a sediment control feature. Maybe it goes there, maybe not. We got to look at some of the grades, what direction everything wants to flow in this site. We're showing, that, what I'm getting is, this may end up just being a conveyance, like a ditch, conveying water that's collected into a, more of a pond back in here, okay? This would be yard waste collection, down here, so the customer would come, it's not shown, not gonna show up very good, but come down a road this way, come down here, unload, come back up here, exit the site, like that. This is at-grade of the ground I hear. This is elevated, so probably one of the most important things, point I could make to you tonight about expansion and so forth. Kind of getting down into details, but what we're trying to do is maintain water from ponding. We want it to go away in both directions from that vertical wall. Customer side, we want it not to puddle up against it and have to walk through puddles. The lower side, we don't want it to collect against the bottom side, and then all the containers are all sitting in puddle of water, so what you end up with is where you've got a wall, and it's draining away in both directions. At the same time, the site is going, as you go into the site, it's rising. So it's going away, and it's going up, so there's a lot going on. So, one of the things that I would say to maintain all the drainage that we're talking about, the critical point in this whole design is the elevation that you have in that first container. What we're trying to do is make the first container high enough that the natural contours around it will allow water to flow off of it and away. Everything else generally gets higher from there, has more relief from that point on. So, the elevation that we put on the low side is kind of a constraint. If you want to put more containers, let's say, down in this area, we're gonna be fighting ourselves down the road, or, or we build in contingency right here, and we say, you know what, we want two extra feet to play with for down the road. No problem, except that you're putting two extra feet on almost this whole fill area here. You know, it's just that much more dirt, I mean, nothing that money can't solve, is what I'm trying to tell you. So, all this stuff, I want, I want, I want, turns into, I will pay, I will pay, I will pay. I want elevation, I want concrete, I will pay, I'll pay, I'll pay, we do all of it. I'm sure there's some kind of a balance. So, that's one of the things...
Where we do need some elevation, are you gonna be hauling dirt in, or are you gonna be using the grade?
We're gonna be trying to use the site, on-site, the best we can. Using dirt from, say, stormwater features to create the elevation, on-site, you know...
Maybe move some of that topsoil around a little bit?
That would be the goal.
Yeah.
We have not done any geotactical, you know, work out here, but I, just by familiarity with the area, I think there's a fairly good chance we'll be able to build it with on-site materials.
Yeah, that's pretty tight clay, I think, I think you get about eight to twelve inches of topsoil.
They got different between north and south.
Yeah.
So, they're gonna be different on each side, so they're gonna be kind of sisters as far as the way they look, but each site's gonna have their own unique issues.
Of course, in your design, when you lay it out, you're gonna be looking at how you would expand it in the future if you ever have to.
So, I think that's what I'm bringing up tonight, is that we can say, put it in so it works where it is now, and you have the least amount of dirt moving required. We can say, you know what, penny wise, pound foolish, give me a few extra feet there, so I can come down in ten, fifteen years, twenty years down the road, and put additional bays in here for whatever materials, but it's gonna cost more money. I don't know exactly how much, but, you know, this is, this is three-quarters of an acre, if you're putting a foot over the whole thing every time you, you know, raise it a foot, it's gonna cost some money.
But a foot will let you go about a hundred feet.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's not as bad as it looks like it is, he's just preparing you to pay some money, so you got a good site when it's all over it. Because one of the things around here with our soil types is, you do not want to pour concrete or asphalt, or build things too low. Because I've done a couple of rest homes, and if I had a chance to go back and go over again, I'd raise them up too deep.
Yes, sir.
Because what you wind up is this hydroscopic water, and it tears up everything, so you've got to consider all that when you lock in the initial design, and that's what he's preparing you for.
This will be, county water will be available here?
Yes.
You're gonna have adequate hose at each bay lights for cleaning, I mean...
As part of the intent, yes.
Yes, we specifically looked for county water, so that we would have that, so that the sites could be washed down and cleaned.
All right, now we're gonna plumb this place, so that when that faucet gets broken off, we're not gonna have to dig up half the world in order to be able to repair it, right?
We want to put it under the most expensive concrete we've got there, as much as... No, sir, I think we understand that what we want to do is be able to access as much of the utilities without getting under hardscape as possible. And we do understand that.
Well, let's talk about the stormwater pond for a minute.
Yes, sir.
This site, and I don't want to say anything Advance doesn't already know, but you need to be aware of this. You're going on to a site where you're hauling hazardous materials in, a lot of other materials in, there's great opportunity to have a spill, and the way the water rules are written, if you have even a sheen coming off of that stormwater pond, you're in violation, and you've got a big problem. So, I'm gonna be interested in seeing the stormwater design, because we don't need, Advance knows this, and he's not gonna do this. I don't wanna see one of these standard stormwater designs like we would do for a hotel, or anything else, because you need more capacity in the stormwater pond, you probably need a shower pond, but that's Advance's work, so you get more veggies in there, so you get more treatment on water going through it. Because if somebody brings in a five-gallon bottle of oil, and it spills here in a rainstorm, and it winds up going through the pond, somebody's gonna be calling Dena, Dena's gonna be out there, and they're gonna get you. So, we need, we need something that we're not gonna spend the rest of our life after you build this thing satisfying them.
So, all correct. The bigger that you can put the pond, the better off it will serve you. The bigger the pond, the more dirt we'll get out of the pond by building the pond. So, yes, all of that makes sense. Hopefully, all the customer activities will occur on a hard surface, i.e. concrete, asphalt. The spills could be contained with your, with your oil-dry type materials swept up, handled before they run off. So, I hope that we have very limited exposure to spillage, in particular, to customers, as well know things happen, you know, gas tank could bust, or something could happen uncontrollable. But I think the way that we're doing this facility, anything where there's an activity is gonna drain through this pond.
Well, I would like for you to consider, and like you say, it's money, 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 but I'd like for you to consider, and I realize you're gonna have a lot of work going to a pond, it may come from not more than one source before it gets in the inlet, sends it to the pond, but I think we should consider an opportunity to divert.
Like an oil-water separator or something?
Yeah, if you had a really bad situation, all of a sudden, we won't be able, and this is a pipe dream right now, would you be able to block something and divert it into a storage pond, so that you can bring a vacuum truck in, pump it up, and get rid of it, as opposed to having a major violation, having the waste law?
I think that is all a viable concern, I can say that this concept does not show that, but it's something that, if directed, we will certainly consider it in the final design.
How much equipment does the county have to buy to run this thing?
To be determined. And I say that because of the way we contract with public services, or whatever other waste management firm that we contract with. Currently, the county does not own equipment. It's included in the management contract, so the contractor that's managing the collection sites also owns the equipment, and so they, their employees are responsible for operating their equipment, their employees are responsible for the planning management summit, their employees are responsible for keeping it clean, and keeping it running, and their employees are responsible for getting it fixed and replaced. Again, because the county personnel, we do not have mechanics in that department, so we currently are choosing for the equipment to be included in the management contract.
So, we spent quite a bit of time talking to vendors about, you know, different equipment, you know, different manufacturers, you know, they would all tell you something, there's a different standard. And we spent a lot of time coming up with the dimensions of this wall, the length of all the walls, the heights, all of that, so that we, you had flexibility to open it up to a number of vendors. You should not be locked out that a vendor says, my equipment will not go into your site, is my point.
Advance, on our site right now, we take used motor oil.
Yes.
And we had some issues with that, so we got it locked, where the tenant has to unlock, so they can make sure you're just pouring used motor oil in there, and not contaminating with other things. But I have watched, I mean, I don't know what your experience is, but I have watched folks throw five-gallon chugs of cooking oil into the compactor, because they keep putting it over there. So, I mean, there's not enough volume of that to contract with some vendor who pulls it from restaurants, but how do you deal with cooking oil?
Most sites ignore, to be perfectly honest, and...
But that's okay if you got a gravel area where it's just so zen and lycetic, but if you got concrete, you got it all running.
So, the multi-material facility is kind of the catch-all. So, I've got a client, we did this twenty years ago in Nash County, as a matter of fact, they, it's a design tank for, like, used oil. And you buy these, and it's got all the vents, it's kind of like a safety can that you see with the metal safety can for gasoline, same principle for used oil. It's got the vent that sticks up way high, it's got the cover, it covers up degraded area, you lock it, you open it up, you can do that, and they have done something similar like that in very, you know, unique places for cooking oil. To me, I mean, seems like there's opportunity, I don't know if that's a city, or county, or, you know, whose responsibility, you know, that is, but it's a matter of putting some kind of a container that you can have out there. Then you get into, you know, other things, I mean, where do you draw the line? And I'm not sure that I'm the one to tell you, that is a political thing.
Is old paint considered destruction debris?
No, sir. So, paint has to be, yeah, paint has to be managed in a specific manner. There's, there are very unique ways I've seen paint handled.
Just open the can and let it dry out. David, don't let it sit there for a week or two.
That's how, that's how I do it, just let it dry out, and peel it off.
Wake County used to have a place where they took paint, and you, they, old base or latex or enamel, whatever, and then they mixed it all together, you got a nice gray paint, and if you wanted a can of gray paint, you come up there, you gave them five dollars, they gave you a can of it.
Yes, sir.
And they painted everything that they had to the same old crappy gray.
Yeah.
You know? That's your habit, Charlie.
It takes personnel.
Yeah, that's right.
So, there are a lot of services that Hoover County can provide, but it takes additional personnel and additional cost.
Absolutely.
But once these facilities are in place, that multi-material shelter will give us space to do that. We may be able, some of these issues like cooking oil, it may be something as simple as one container that has a lock, if you have the personnel to manage it. The paint, the same thing, you may be able to take the latex paint and combine it. The oil-based paint would be collected on our HHS construction events, which we currently now have two times a year, so, again, trying to provide these additional services to the residents is all that matters.
I think Wake, Wake County handled some of that stuff was, they had that multi-material over on the side, and if you wanted to go dump a computer in it, you had to give them five bucks first, and then they would, then they would let you dump it in. So they was actually charging people for...
They did some of that extra stuff.
They have multiple ways to do some of this stuff.
That is, but then you're starting to get into handling of cash, and things like that. So, I would say that these facilities have the ability to incorporate some of these programs that you choose. I would be careful to say, any program that you choose, every one of them is gonna add cost. And famous client of mine is the juice gonna be worth the squeeze. Famous, but this site should give you some flexibility. You know, both these sites are, you know, they're gonna be adequate to handle the volumes that have been generated here, of your traditional materials collected.
So, the north and the south are gonna be the same, or the south's not gonna have the yard waste, is that what it is?
Now, the north will not have a storm debris site, the south will have a storm debris site, the, all other services should be virtually identical, the way they look and...
The head to the south side is on the next slide, and that one's really hard to see, but...
Yeah, it is very hard to see.
Commissioner Walker, you can see this area up here is the, it's cut off, this is not the full site, but this is the storm debris area up in this section.
Looks adequate.
Like I said, there's more up here, it's off the screen.
Top right.
Top right, that area right there?
Yes.
That's on the other side of some wetlands, it's some additional space, we're thinking that might be a potential borrow area for construction, or expansion down the road.
And again, the storm debris is typically named storms, when we need to, there's a large quantity of yard waste that's produced at one time, and there's the need to isolate that waste, hopefully to get reimbursement off of them. So it needs to be a totally separate collection point from all of our normal waste, so that's why we're showing that as a storm debris.
Is the ground down there specially prepared to handle? I mean, is it like, would it be lined with...
For the yard debris line is required by anything, and again, it's...
Or storm debris.
Right, yeah, to get, there may be, they're coming out to get some sites pre-approved, there may be some gravel in a certain area, and some pincing requirements, or the ability to put in pincing if you needed, that type of thing, and that, those type of things will be included in the final design. will be included in the final design.
And so then somebody comes in and grinds this up, right?
Yeah, especially the storm debris, because it would all be, and I don't want to jinx this, but again, a large, say if you're a large hurricane, and you have roadside pickup throughout the county, so the trucks would be picking up the waste, then they would be coming to this location, there would be a monitor there in order to track each load, and then go in, and predict the quantities, and however, at that point, you decide to determine that, and it would be isolated, and the quantity would be determined, and then they'd go in, do the grinding, and then haul away, and that would all be included in the overall cost of the storm debris.
This is vegetative, this isn't treated lumber, this isn't shingles, things like that, we're talking vegetative debris going in here.
If I ask you, your MSW, you said, is it designed for the next 20 years, 30 years?
So, what limits your capacity of your MSWs, basically how many times you pick up the container? And so, what we're trying to do is get the maximum weight per container, and so obviously how much people bring in there determine the weight, how much you compact it determines how much you put in each can, and how many pulls you need. So, what we did was an analysis of, with the pre-crushers, and I'm going off memory, but I believe that we were getting somewhere south of four tons per container before, and we're shooting for nine plus tons per container with the pre-crusher, so you're, right there, you're cutting your hauls in half. And so, if you, if you look at the number of hauls you could do in a day, let's just say that's kind of limiting your capacity of the site, and it's, I think the number of hauls is what's going to limit you more than the site constraints. So, schedule. So, everything that we've talked about, really our conceptual design seems to be, you know, fairly complete of everything that we've heard, there's not a lot of major modifications. So, based on that, and we're saying that we could have our final design upon the, you know, it's time to go, 30 days, it'll take another 60 days after you get your final design, to get necessary permits, now we don't control that schedule, but that is anticipated, that is what we have typically seen. Then, after you get your final permits, another 30 days to finalize your construction documents, that would be drawings, and that would be specifications, which incorporates all of your general conditions, you know, what does it take to bid a project here versus, you know, other places. So, bidding and contract execution, 30 days, I'm going to go ahead and tell you, I've probably said that, I think that's very aggressive, 30 days is aggressive, I'll just tell you right now, that ain't going to happen in 30 days. Construction, we got for each site, 150 days, I think that's reasonable, so we have 12, I mean, 11 months, 12 to 15 months is probably what you're talking about, if you said, I'm ready to go, is what I believe is reasonable. Can you believe that?
Yes.
Both sites will go simultaneously, I don't know if this is out there, but, you know, probably bid both sites concurrently. Don't know, you know, we're still talking strategy, do you bid one site like one day, and the next site a couple of days later, do they come in at the exact same time, so kind of try to know if he's going to get one, or both, or none. We still have some of the strategy there to talk about. There's some concept about, hey, if, what are, what considerations would you give the county if they, you were awarded both of them? You know, we don't have to have two sets of shop drawings and stuff with it, the same site by the same contractor, or same equipment. Things like that are still, you know, being bounced around. But at the same time, I think there, we'd like to, we'd like the ability for, you know, if we have two qualified contractors, to have two different contractors to bid on, we give them good proposals for each. So, those things are what are to be worked out with the construction documents.
And more than likely, it'll be issued with different alternatives, with different options, so we're not just going to ask for one price and one way, we're going to be asking for multiple prices, so we can kind of pick and choose what's the best, most advantageous for us.
Well, that's when you get into asphalt here, and concrete here, and things like that, yeah.
Just remember, the maintenance cost on concrete over a 20-year period of time is very competitive with asphalt, and you've got a road you can use for the whole 20 years instead of a pothole over three or four years.
The, I would argue that gravel and other materials, you could even use some of your tumble grass, glass, to put in those holes, but you could, you could keep a road up a lot cheaper that way. You're going to have, you're going to have potholes no matter what, you ought to have the equipment out there to keep it up.
Are we doing scenarios to say if you use concrete, it's going to cost this, or you're going to use asphalt?
Yeah, that's what you said.
And so, since we're all talking about it, going back to this picture here, just so we can kind of get a general idea, we're talking about the entrance road that's coming in. So, one option would be that the entire road is concrete, is that what you gentlemen would like to see?
So, that is an option.
Other option would be the entry road is asphalt, and this area, basically your loading area, where cars are coming, vehicles are coming in, they're stopping, they're turning, the tires are moving, there's a lot of friction on the surface, so looking at this portion here, all being concrete.
Absolutely.
I would rec, depending upon cost, I think there would have to be a huge, huge cost savings in order for me to want to, that to change to asphalt. At the very least, this portion needs to be concrete, so that, that's our plan, so those will be the two options.
Considering the weight of the vehicle, just going in and out.
That's right.
So, asphalt would be more, good said.
The area located in the back where your service vehicles are, as you see, it's kind of a dotted hatching there, I believe we're currently showing that as some type of stone dance, is that correct?
I would recommend that area being shot in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because of the, the large volume of it. Again, this area that comes up to the mixed material facility, that's a loading dock, so that would be concrete?
If, if I may elaborate just a little bit on what the thought process may be, so you, you are anticipating hiring an operator. Operator's going to have their equipment, and their drivers, and so forth, limiting, that's, it's their people down in that area. So, you're going to give them a site and say, this is what you inherited, this is what I anticipate, this is what you will keep up to this standard. So, if they go out there and run it up and tear it up, it's their job to go fix it. That would be something that I would consider part of the contract for operations.
Good point, especially if you're doing asphalt.
And again, you see the roadway that's coming around here, so we'll be looking at options here, you can see different things. Also, keep in mind, this vegetative area, again, people will be coming in, driving their personal vehicle in, and then they will be able to, as it's managed and maintained, you know, you start in the back of the property, and then you slowly fill, and it starts working its way out, and that, then you come in and do your grinding and do the removal. So, people will be coming in and driving on the surface, so again, the people that are managing the property would be coming in, and some type of equipment that they'd be able to push the vegetative debris that's accumulating there, so that it can be stockpiled, and then also, they would be responsible for maintaining the roadway and the driving in and out. Anyone who's been down to our existing facility, obviously, it can be a challenge at times to drive down there, but our, the person that's facilitating that now has done a great job of keeping that roadway up, and even possibly having two ways for them to get in and out, so if one gets kind of rutted up by the trucks coming in and out, then they can use another entrance. So, again, this entire area has some type of surface, but not concrete.
So, the visualization with the darker, like strips that you see here, this isn't going to be like one big pile in the center, as high as you can go, or whatever. What you need to visualize is that you're wind rolling it, so that the person doing the process can go along, load it, ship it, leave a, leave a row of chips out there, so you've got to, you've got to be able to do it so it can be processed. And the more you do that up front, the less it's going to cost you to process it, the more trouble you create for the processor, the more you're going to pay for it.
Does there need to have this facility fenced in?
So, yes, there would be some reasons to have it fenced in, and we're talking about potential cameras, and other things.
Yeah, that was my next thing, that you didn't see that, how easy to be shot out.
Yeah, our intention is definitely to have adequate lighting, as well as cameras. There have been numerous scenarios in the past 24 months, that having the cameras has been a benefit to everyone involved. It just, it stops a lot of the he said, she said, and that type of thing, so if there's any type of issue or dispute, you're able to go back to that. And with this coming in, and us designing it, it will have adequate locations, and also adequate power and things like that, to fix some of the issues we currently have. Looking at the sites, and again, this is the north, north side site, obviously, we have to go in and do clearing. Our intention, and we'll go in and look, but as you can see, there's quite a bit of buffer that's there. So, the plan is not to go in and clear cut this entire parcel, the plan is to leave a buffer up, so that people driving down the roadway, that type of thing, it's not so obvious. We will go in and do quite a bit of clearing, just at the entrance to the road, to get the site triangles, to make sure that there's no question. This particular one, as you see, there's a little bit of a curve here, so there will probably, there will be more clearing in this front area, we want to make sure everyone can see, you know, the traffic's is coming, and people can see pulling out. But again, we do plan on keeping as much, or not, not clearing any more property than what we need to at this point in time. And that should help, obviously, the way, as people are driving down the highway, what they're able to see, and then also, any type of, type of glowing trash, or something like that, obviously, it should be minimal, but, but still, if it is glowing, hopefully, it blows back here into the tree line, and not out here onto the roadway. We don't want to glue Walmart bags that are all along the right of way, so that's what we're looking at on both sides.
What I anticipate, when we're doing the bidding, and again, depends on how we, how we ultimately go with it, but had great success with doing line item bidding, so every line item, as much as you can break out, if you want to have fencing, say we've got 1,000 feet of fence, what is your unit price per foot to put in the fencing, you'll get paid for how many feet you put in? What is a square foot into a asphalt? What is the cubic yardage of dirt you move? What is, as much of that as you can do? And that also gives you some flexibility to say, well, you know, that came in higher than I wanted, and that was kind of crazy, what if we eliminate this, and you have some flexibility before you go to award? To do some of that, yeah. Hey, you got a great price on the fence, let's do a lot more, because I got something else I want to do out there, whatever, things can happen. So, takes a little more effort to come up with all the, you know, line items, and the measurement, and payments, and so forth, but things are the way to go, to do these projects.
Our current landfill is not fenced in totally, and I mean, obviously, that's a large parcel, and we've had issues with people coming in, writing, you know, ATBs and that type of thing on our, on our property, liability that that raises. Thankfully, we haven't had any major issues with that, but still, that, that's an issue. Surrounding areas, maybe at least the hunting clubs, different things like that, so if we're able to put the fencing up, I think that's the best scenario for the county, which is actually the question for it.
I would think a minimum, our cleared area, would be a fence.
Whether what on the north side is definitely an area where you're going to have hunters and four-wheelers. I don't know about the south side, but...
And again, the entire parcel, like I said, the area that we're clearing and using may be what we fence at this time, not the entire parcel, but we can, again, that's what we can't say, we'll get, get a linear foot policy, and then we can make a decision based on that. We're trying our best to get kind of a menu, where you're able to select, and we're able to prioritize, because there are a lot of things that we would all like, but if it comes on the vote, then we just have to prioritize, and then we can plan for the future, if we want to go in and add those in later.
I think you guys have done a great job.
Yes, good job.
Really do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So, Mr. Walker, where's, is, where's the direction of the word for, I think Vance is looking for some direction about, are you guys ready to proceed to finalize the design?
I, do we need to have an official vote? Is that what you're looking for?
I mean, they need some direction on that.
Is this a voting meeting? I thought this was just an information meeting, and I don't mind giving them a direction and verifying that our meeting is a personal one, but I don't think you have a cause in the public you're going to be voting.
Is that right?
Well, it, it's a workshop, so I don't see...
Yeah, the advertisement was as if it was a special call meeting, and that this would be the topic of the discussion. So, there was no, you could, you could vote if you chose to.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll entertain the motion that we proceed.
So, who...
Is there a second? I'll second it. Um, discussion, I, I really do want to push forward, at some point, we're going to need to do some recycling, I mean, I, I think it's a big issue, it's a costly issue to all of America, and to North Carolina, and to even Beaufort County, when we get some groups talk about the Green New Deal, and how they're going to save the planet, you know they're not going to save the planet, just want to redirect the economy. You can't spend trillions of dollars in saving the planet, when your neighbor's not trying to save the planet. What we can do is save and be good stewards here locally, and it's a modicum of the cost that's going to cost otherwise. So, I'm going to be looking to push recycling, it's one of the four tenets of, you know, being a good steward. So, I, I just want to make sure that we've got space for that, we've got a board of commissioners up here that wants to do that. There's one other thing I'd like...
I'll just reiterate, each site has a allocated space for a compactor to handle mixed recycling, which I believe is...
That's the beginning, that's the beginning, but there could be some other things we might want to do later on.
Yeah, we have, we have, well, as I say, we have a, we have a separate one for segregated cardboard, has a compactor. So, between those two materials, you're, you're doing a tremendous amount just in those two.
Yeah, well, there's glass, and there's other things that need to be recycled at some point, you just need to have room. I mean, we got, we've got big space, we got some big spaces.
We've got the space, I mean, the north side layout, if you saw it, was probably half of the parcel we're requiring. You saw the south side, it includes the storm debris area, and then there was the far set aside in the back, too, so there, there's space at both sites for expansion.
Well, what I'd like to see, and engineer, you'll know how to do this, just don't cut off a road from moving over to the other areas, you know what I mean? Keep it, keep a space open. Well, you're not going to have curving gutters all the way back, are you?
No curving gutter.
No curving gutter.
Um, I think what I'm hearing is, we need flexibility for future...
Yeah, we do.
...unforeseen events.
Yes.
No, I kind of foresee them, but they're going to be events nonetheless.
Is there anything that would mess you up if the closing didn't occur?
What's scheduled, is the only thing, as far as, as far as, we're just waiting on, we have provided, this is what it's going to take to get it to the point where we can give you a bid, and have you consider the project. We've kind of settled on that, and it's just a matter of y'all say, we're satisfied with the project that you're going forth with, go forth and do it, or should we wait? I'm good either way. Um, I, I, I just, we're just trying to manage expectations. We don't know if this is, this go, or, you know, we're not in a hurry. That's, I think that's, oh, we're waiting on it.
What's your, is your motion regarding... But we've got to have all the plans before we get the bids, so...
Does the motion take it up to the bid point? That's what the motion should do. Otherwise, you're spending...
I mean, this is just a planning stage we're in right now, and, you know, we'll, we'll get the bids later, but right now, we got a plan for how we're gonna ask the engineer to move. No, no, we're...
This is the end of the planning stage. Yeah, we've, and that's, and again, that's why we came back here tonight to do this, because we talked about it. Garrett Moore has brought conceptual plans before we've looked at it. Then at the planning retreat back in February, we talked about it again, but there were different ideas that were brought up. So, again, that's why we're having this meeting tonight. The, this is, we've tried to bring everybody's opinions and everybody's desires, and, and what we thought was the best path forward, and we presented this.
All right. May I make a friendly amendment? Yeah, okay, amendment, but, you know, I, I just wanna say one thing.
It's not your call.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's my call, I made the motion, so...
Well, the friendly amendment is that we authorize Garrett Moore to proceed through the bid process. At that point, we'll have to look at it and make a decision when we see what the costs are, because they've already done everything that you can do up until a final design, putting the finish points on that and putting a bid package together. I mean, they're ready to go. So, that's... Yeah, and we've, we've had a planning process, and that's great, and there's some things I wanted to see, and they're not all in there. Uh, but I just don't want to cut off the ability to move forward. I, I agree with the mega sites, because we need to have large areas where we can do big things later. And, uh, and I've been a, an advocate of doing this the whole time, but there's gonna be some things we, we want to do at some point when we get a different set of commissioners up here. That's just what it's gonna be.
These sites are designed, obviously, we've gone through the property acquisition phase. Um, the, the acreage that we used when we were selecting these sites allow for expansion in the future. It depends on how you define expansion, because again, how much are you talking about? If you're talking about adding a MRF, which is something you've mentioned in the past, then we can do it, we just may need to expand in the adjacent property, or something along those lines. So, it depends on what, when, when you speak in terms of recycling, we need to be specific, because we do recycle. We currently recycle items now. If you're talking about adding additional commodities that we want to recycle, then we can do that, and we can look at each one individual, and then we'll make that selection. So, when you ask, "Do we have room, do we have, are we able to expand these sites?", my answer would be yes. As Vance said earlier, all it takes is money. So, if in the future, your other commissioners are in, that's their desire, and they allocate the funding, then we can expand to fulfill all of their desires, however it needs to be.
Yeah, and these are good locations for that, since Square House owns the land around it, and...
The, the...
I'm sure they're, they would be fair in selling the land, and I think they gave us a fair price on this land. Okay, gentlemen, we, uh, Ann agrees with it, I agree with the motion, uh, we're down to, everybody understands the motion, all right? Everybody in favor of the motion and friendly amendment to it? Katie, you okay with it? That's, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Does that give you enough...
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, is anybody opposed? I, I couldn't see. Okay, okay, all right. And Jerry, Jerry's already told, he's for it, so, okay.
Well, thank you all for your time this evening, and allow me to come in and discuss this project, and if anybody's got any questions, I'll be around.
We're...
I'll see you again.
Yes, sir.
Where, where's Jared?
Thank you.